Give you the mayor one more minute. Danny got pulled over.
Oh, that'd be great. Here he is, he's walking in.
We'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of November 4th, 2025 and exactly 6:01 PM. Not quite, roll conference.
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilman Gleason.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Stand and ready for the pledge. Please be seated. Do we have any additions, additions or modifications to the agenda? If none, they have none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, second by Councilman Warner, roll call. Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk. When you're recalled to speak, please go to the podium and prior to adjusting the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response if necessary. Any follow up will be handled by staff at a later time. There will also be time for public comment later if you'd like to comment later. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do, mayor, by Mr. Bobby Farber.
Mr. Farber. St. Norman's Way. Step right up.
All right, just just a quick monthly, just on the street lighting, it's gotten worse. I had a one hour conversation today. There were boring issues permits that needed to be get. There are lights that were on back order. They seem to be coming in, so they'll be fixed and they'll be going up. There's also different departments working on stuff. But all in all, there's fifty seven lights out and that doesn't work for me. So I hope next month to have a much better meeting with you and tell you that everything is late. And that's it.
Good question for Mr. Farber.
Sure.
Mr. Farber. Beginning of the summer, the city manager told me that the new lighting on Seminole Pratt would be coming in three months. It's not there yet. Do you know any more about that?
I did have a conversation about that today. That thing was in what they call a status sixty, which technically means that it's months away from getting started. But I had a conversation last month with Zane Beard of Sid, who said that they had a punch list that had to be fixed. So that could be anything from transformer work, some type of piping that had to get done to allow for that. Last month, he told me that was done. I did speak last night with them and or with my person today, who is going to see if they could seek out any more information as to if that's actually going. Because somehow looking, I saw the meeting in two thousand and nineteen, when it first came before the council stating that it was going to be done. And we're six years later and it's still trying to get done, as Ken said. So hopefully I can get something for next month and give you a little more information with that. But that's going to be, if I remember, hundred and fifty eight lights, seventy nine of them on Seminole Pratt Whitney. And then the rest will be in all the new areas and everything. And they provided for that in the budget because there was a ninety eight percent increase in street lighting in the Sid budget this year as well as traffic maintenance. So I did check on a few other things with traffic signals.
So status sixty means waiting to see?
Means that you're getting close and it's about to happen and that pretty much sums it up. So but I was told typically when it gets there, there's like a three to four month period at which it will start. That's probably why Kent was under that assumption.
Because I would expect at some point soon, we will see the light standards laying horizontal on the road, on the side of the road, waiting to be installed, but they're not even there.
You'll see crews just going out. They'll go one by one. They'll go out with a big, it's a boring machine. They'll start digging their concrete poles that they're going to be putting in Cobra heads that are going up on it. So yeah, you'll see that work. I mean, it'll be extensive and then they'll have to get all the cable pulled in and everything. So even once it starts, it's not going to be an overnight.
Right.
But I'm sure everybody will be happy when we see it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farber. Our lighting czar. All right, any other public comment? All right, moving forward, we have a presentation, Palm Beach County School District. We have an update. How are you, sir?
Good. Okay. Good evening. Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
In my own way.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I am David Dolan. I'm the chief of facilities management for the school district. And I am here with a bevy of school district leadership that I'd like to first start off with welcoming our school board member, Ms. Marsha Andrews.
Andrew.
And my, our presentation today, of course, is about the new elementary school, twenty three E, twenty three H. And along with me, I'll be doing most of the presentations and I will like to stress that I talk way too much. My boss, Mr. Sanchez, the chief operating officer from the school district can attest. I have a lot of slides. Got a lot of slides. And then I also have with me Dr. RC, Anna RC Gonzalez, who's our instructional superintendent. Maria Bishop is our chief operating officer. Patrick Sippel is our L R. And Dr. James Campbell, who many of you know, is our school district principal liaison. I'm going to get started right off. Those of you who are familiar with the site, the Westlake School site is right in the middle of the, let me see if I can do this, right in the middle of the campus. Up here, we have our Western Pines and Golden Grove. And of course, Seminole, Seminole Ridge is down here. Jumping right into it, okay, we're proposing to build a, the same school that we've built. It's a prototype for our school district. You've seen it at Arden, you may have seen it down in Boca, it's called Blue Lake. The information, oh, and by the way, just so you know, the slides, you guys all have the slides. We are welcome to make sure that the community gets the slides. We will be having community meetings to introduce this more to the actual population. Site data, as you can see, it's at the corner of Persimmon and Green. We are designed, we are well into our design. We anticipate onsite queuing of about a hundred and twenty eight vehicles. We have a hundred and sixty one parking spaces anticipated and buses. The bus loop is down in this area. The traffic will come in along Persimmon, will make a right onto Green and a right into the school. They will exit out of Green, onto Green and go south on Green. Our, our building construction, it's a ninety six thousand square foot building. It's a three story classroom building and and I anticipate nine hundred and seventy one student stations.
We got to mute somebody.
Okay, well, I'll keep going. We are well into design. We anticipate, we will, we anticipate construction to start in early twenty twenty six, in March of twenty six. And then for us, it's usually about a sixteen to eighteen month construction period of time. So we would be open for August of twenty seven. So and because it's a prototype, made it a lot easier for us to move forward on, on this. I don't know. Okay. Rendering of what it, what it will look like, you'll notice in the front of the campus, the three story building, classroom building in the front, there's an admin space. Zipping on. Some of the photos that I have coming up are all photos of some of the other schools. Many of you are familiar with the Arden School Saddle View. Here's some of our exterior views from both Saddle View and from, that's actually from Saddle View. This one is from Blue Lake, which is down in Boca. Same, same exact footprint, different aesthetics, matching the community. Okay. Some of the features I wanted to point out in, in this, with this facility is it's a low E U I facility, which is an energy use intensity characteristic. It's basically ideal for perform, low perform, low energy performance. It goes to, we have solar panels, as a matter of fact, I'll jump back up to some of those photos. We have solar panels planned for this site to help reach us towards net zero. The intent, the ultimate intent is for full sustainability, which is a huge precept with the school district. And one of the things that we've recently engaged in is golf cart drop off and pickup. Is as we understand it, this community is quite well versed at golf carts.
Music too much.
And any opportunity that we can do to eliminate some traffic off of the actual roads is one of our, one of our big focuses, I'll get into that shortly. As I mentioned, while the, the aesthetics of some of these other schools like Arden, they have their own look. We will, of course, work to, towards features of the school to be more in line with the aesthetics of your community. And, okay, and moving on to the floor plans, okay, three story building. You'll notice on the first floor, we focus on the dining area, the cafeteria and kitchen. The art and music is downstairs. Of course, right near the front is the administration and the first story of our three story classroom building. Show you a better view of that, that's what the floor, first floor looks like. Moving on to the second floor, we have a media center up on the second floor. That's the one that has really nice glass windows out in the front. It's great for natural light, good for our learning environments. And of course, on the third floor, our, our school would be geared towards a K and one kindergarten and first grade on the first floor, second and third on the second floor and fourth and fifth on the third floor. So the difference is the third floor does have what we call a group restroom, as opposed to where the other, other building, the other floors all have classroom restrooms in them for the students.
And male and female restrooms?
In the, in the first and second floor, it's a single use restroom, so it's the teachable.
Either or.
The group restroom.
The group restrooms are in fact ma- male and female separate. Some of the other photos we have here are some of the photos from the build out of these other schools, which we intend to try to mimic and, but yet still make it a little bit more of the flair of this community. Okay, this is usually where everybody jumps up and down and I want to make sure that we get this out in front. We recognize traffic is a concern, let's face it. If it's a school, there's usually going to be traffic nearby. We are doing, we've done a lot of traffic studies so far and what you'll see on this floor, this site plan is our bus loop coming in off of Persimmon, only allowing buses. As I mentioned, the cars will come along Persimmon and turn right onto Green and circulate through the school, back out to Green, south to Ilex, is that how, Ilex? That, that's our, our general focus for traffic flow. There's plenty of challenges in that. We have two different walking points coming up from the south as well as coming from the east and north. The east and north, that path along there is going to be an extra wide. I think right now it's only eight, we're proposing to widen it to twelve feet along Persimmon. And along this entry here, we're not only going to have a pedestrian path, pedestrian bicycle path with a bike racks, but we're also planning on having, you can faintly see it, but there's actual parking spots, golf cart parking spots. Dad could drive up, drop off, turn themselves around and exit back out. Our hope being that it's.
Can you point to where that is?
Sure, along the sidewalk, right along here, and then we've got a little circle to circulate back out. There's a couple, there's a handful of parking spaces along here. And that white thing to the side of it is actually the pedestrian walk for pedestrian bicycle walk. Also, an eight, at least an eight foot wide walk.
But potentially twelve?
Potentially twelve. We, there's, there is room for it, it's a matter of making adjustments as, as needed. And it's really a question of what's the volume? If we build it at eight, can we expand it to twelve at some time in the future?
Is the golf cart access separate from the pedestrian?
It is, the, yeah, you'll actually have double set of gates. Golf carts will come in one, the, the walkers and the bike, bicycle riders will be able to come in that second outside gate. So they're, they're right next to each other, but they will have separate entrances. And it'll also help for pickup, parent pickup, which is always the, the fun time, getting people stacked up and whatnot. What we're trying to do is stick with the county ordinance to make sure the golf carts don't ride on the road. Right, I think that's the city, the city's mindset towards driving on the golf carts on the road. We're going to try to at least stay within the bounds unless the city adopts other ordinances that allow for it. But for the time being, we're, we're proposing to, to accommodate that. Recognizing that we're going to have other traffic challenges throughout the neighborhood. One of our first features, and by the way, there's your, there's your, your explanation, the sidewalk is the blue one and then the red is the golf cart path. You'll all use the blue sidewalk. In addition to that, we're stacking, I said, we had a hundred and twenty eight spaces onsite. We also have.
And those are queuing.
Cueing, and it'll be double stacked all the way through up until, till the, right around the drop off point.
Is that, is, I'm sorry to interrupt, is that like a higher number of queuing spots? What's, what do you generally see in most schools?
That's, that's about, that's about it. We, we go some, anywhere between a hundred and twenty five queuing spots onsite.
Okay.
And now again, for us, the traffic on the, on the roadways are our challenge.
Sure.
And that's why we're proposing to turn the right turn lane. We are proposing to build an entire turn lane on Green so that the, the main green roadway will continue straight through without having our parent cars on.
Interrupting them, wow.
So that's, right now, the turn lane is, is, exists there along Persimmon and we would just eat into our section to build the turn lane on Green in order to try to help free up.
You know the number of vehicles that can be queued in that turn lane from?
I don't, I don't know off the, off the top of my head, I don't know if James.
I think with the green turn lane and the queuing, I think it's thirty six hundred per year between the two. So between the green and the queuing on property, it's thirty six hundred total per year.
Which is probably about a hundred eighty, about a hundred eighty cars.
It's another quarter of what we have on queuing onsite.
Did you include the Persimmon queuing lane?
Yes.
Okay.
There's twenty four hundred basically onsite and then I believe there's another twelve in that green area.
So it's a substantial amount of queuing to try to keep the main Persimmon lane drive going straight through as well, green. So these are what we're trying to do in the area directly around the, the school. We want to make sure that we've addressed those things we can do during construction. Beyond there, I'll be the first, first to acknowledge, there may be needs for additional reevaluation. Anybody says that we've got the traffic line lined up, they're probably not a hundred percent certain. Because do you know exactly how many students are going to be, from what sections of the neighborhood are going to be coming? How many of them are going to be using golf carts? How many of them are going to walk and bike? How many are going to go on to be picked up in the afternoon versus, you know, walking in the morning? A lot of those things change and parents' minds change as they evaluate this circulation. So what we're working on is the best scenario we can handle at this time. And we acknowledge there may be other features that at some time in the future that may be necessary.
Can you? Will this school majority be Westlake students?
Okay, well, remember when I said I had some other people that were here to speak?
Okay.
They, they will, I think they will address that, yes. The intent is, I think the, the bulk of the students, this will be relieving Golden Grove and a little bit of Locksahatchee Groves. So it, it'll, it will be the majority of students that go to Golden Grove. In some way, shape or form, there might be adjustments to boundaries and that's why I'll let some of my other colleagues.
Well, because it, I mean, it certainly plays into your, your traffic issue, you know?
Yes. Where are they coming from? Are they coming from within the community or are they coming off of Town Center Drive? Are they coming off of Seminole Pratt? Yeah, there's certainly other concerns that we aren't necessarily capable of giving you an absolute steadfast answer right now. But we're pretty comfortable, we've, based on the demographics, we, we recognize that there's quite a number of students that will be accommodated from within the community.
Do you have a traffic slide showing the, the distribution of where traffic is coming from? As you said, you've had traffic studies.
Well, we've had studies based on the demographics, where we anticipate what we think might be. But I can't tell you with certainty that I even know where the students are all going from. Is it going to be predominantly from, from the Westlake community? I would, I would venture that that's the case.
Curious about left turn lanes, left turn, left turns from Persimmon onto Green to get access to the road.
Correct, that's, that's actually, the left turn from Persimmon onto Green is going to be one of our challenges. And the, the sentiment is to try to, I guess, dissuade folks from heading in that direction. Because, yeah, I could probably make the Persimmon left turn lane onto Green a longer, right, propose to build that longer. That's just going to exacerbate the problem. What we prefer is based on the community, have them routing around through Town Central onto Persimmon going west.
Practical is that?
Well, that's, again, it's, it's all, it's also a function of where the students are coming from.
Understood, Wes was asking if your traffic studies show any of those projections.
Well, we have, again, we have, we have basic traffic studies based on what we anticipate until we really see where it's coming from, what the, what the student counts are. And I know that you're still building, you're still.
Right.
Advancing in the, in the build out of your community. So a lot of that's still to, still to be come, come for. Okay, there we go. So this is more along the lines of, if you're looking at the big picture, trying to understand where the other impacts might come from. You've got a commute, commercial development directly across the street from the school. We have a future medical complex and we could see that this Ilex Persimmon area could end up being the challenge, the bottleneck. And we anticipate that that might be the, a challenge. I know that your roads have been designed to accommodate some future work, whether it be traffic signals or right turn lanes, left turn lanes, that kind of thing. So we do anticipate that there might be a need for additional work.
Seven thirty AM and around two PM are going to be the, you know, one thirty PM and seven thirty AM are going to be the times. Is there aftercare?
There will be. I'll leave that up to, but, but we would anticipate that will, there will be an aftercare program. And the, we always have the, the challenge of the, the moms and dads who stack up at twelve thirty waiting to get in line or that's something we want to try to, and we've worked with other schools in the past on trying to limit that. So we will continue to do.
What do you see along Green Lane turning into the school? Is there any left turn accommodation there?
There will not, there's already a divided median there that we do not plan to.
So you're going to see U turns from Green Lane on, you know, going to Persimmon, turning, making a U turn?
Well, right now, we don't anticipate it, but I mean, there, there's a possibility right here at the corner of the, of the groves that I think there's a, a turn right there. That might be someplace, but again, that's, that's something that certainly can be worked through, traffic signalization. We can, you know, no U turns, things like that. Those are, those are features that are within the, the control of the law enforcement, the, the road control. Because we, we anticipate that most of the traffic is going to want to come up to Ilex, turn right and then venture back to the community, whether it's, whether it's along Persimmon or back through on Town Center, back to their homes.
Yeah, I was concerned more about incoming traffic to the school coming along Green and turning left, wanting to turn left into the school, but.
Yeah, I see your point, absolutely. I understand that they'd come, I guess, north on Green and then want to do a U turn.
Right.
And they're turning right into the oncoming.
Exactly.
And that's, that's why, as I said, I think our focus is to try to persuade people from coming on Persimmon and making the left or coming on Green and doing a U turn. Persuade them by the, the principal communications, working with the town yourselves to say, we'd really like you to not do that, even to have traffic, no U turns, no U turns at that corner. Law enforcement shows up there one time and it tends to persuade.
I think the golf cart accommodation is one of the crucial elements here.
We, we, that's what we're, we're hoping for. So we would anticipate to see a much stronger influx of vehicles.
If they can get in and out quicker.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll use that method.
Absolutely.
Thousand percent.
And, and, and I, I don't want to speak for the, the academic folks, but I know that they have different release times, like when you're getting out at the end of the day, they, they oftentimes try to have different release times for the cars versus the bike, the bicycles, the walkers.
Oh, wow.
If the golf carts are part of the bicycles and walkers, they might actually have a head start, you know? So that might be an incentive for folks to say, I, I'm going to go pick them up with the golf cart instead of driving.
Will you provide parents with a traffic management plan of sorts that will identify for them what you call the preferred traffic approach?
Most certainly, most certainly. And, and I say that I will, when we have a principal assigned, that principal will very likely be the, the voice to the community and working with, and I guess many of our principals, one of our principals is here, knows they work very well with the, the local jurisdictions to make sure that they're in, in lockstep on the communications with the public. Okay. And at this time, I'm going to finally stop talking and I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Sippel as our demographer.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Dolan.
Yeah, that's true. There you go.
I'll leave that.
Hi, good evening, I'm Patrick Sippel. I'm with the demographics and student enrollment department. And I'm here to just go over our school boundary process that we have. I know all of you are excited to know when we'll get started, looking at the zones and things like that. So generally with the school, generally with the school zoning process, we start a year before the school actually opens up. So right now, think of it as we're about a year and a half, not quite two years out. So we're doing our twenty twenty five boundary process for school boundaries for this coming August. And then what we'll be doing is for this new school, we'll actually be starting in the spring of twenty twenty six. So with all of that process, the key driver to it is data. So in, in spring, what we do is after we've had our, at that point in time, after we've had our October twenty twenty five enrollment count that we do, and of course, that is going to be really telltale and important this year. As you know, we have, as a district, lost about six thousand students through the, through the, the course of the year from, and that's the first major drop that we've had in a school district for. the course of the year from, and that's the first major drop that we've had in a school district since the the COVID time period. So that that data point next year is going to be really, really important to see where we fall, not only as a district, but also as our individual communities go. So what we do at that time is we update our five-year enrollment projections. So that's taking a look at what will then be probably out to about twenty thirty two, how our schools are going to be impacted, how we project that will will go. And from there, we actually compare that to the school capacity. And we look at critical points in the districts where we are over-enrolled, over-enrolled slightly, critically over-enrolled. And we come up with a course of action to look at how we're going to address that over enrollment. From there, what we'll do is we move into the fall and winter portion of of the boundary process. So between that spring, summer, we're already starting to look at the data. We're analyzing the five-year enrollment projections. And what we do is we start to actually look at scenarios for the schools, the school zoning. And generally, what we do is we don't come forward with just one particular zone. If we if we have various schools that are in need, be it Golden Grove, Locksahatchee, possibly other areas, what we'll do is we'll come forward with a collection of studies with the data that includes feeder patterns to the middle and high schools as well as just our, the attending students versus the residing students. So you know that there there are students in Westlake that don't necessarily attend Golden Grove or Locksahatchee. And we know that also that with a school, when we build a school, we always get students coming out of the woodwork. So we do have to show that so that we can address those students as well, because we serve everyone. So at that point in time, we go through, we we have our school boundary process committee, our ABC committee set up. And the members then review the documents, the studies, the data.
What does ABC stand for?
Attendance Boundary Committee.
I'm sorry?
Attendance Boundary Committee. So what they'll do is they'll hold meetings. All of those meetings are public and available to everyone. Sometimes we had lately, we had had them online, which we found that that serves a wider group of the community that can't necessarily make me make it at certain times. And other times, we have them in-person meetings. But there's not just one meeting. They'll they'll go forward, they'll ask us questions, they'll ask us if we can provide more data, be it Westlake Certificate of Occupancy data, you know, what's the new, what are the new developments? Are the are the Oaks in play yet at that time? You know, how the development's going with that? And we'll go forward and we'll bring forward that data. And what they'll do then is in the winter, spring, they'll go and determine what they feel is the best course of action for one of these studies to move forward to be recommended to the superintendent. And then the superintendent will then review the information. And then he will recommend a study to the school board to vote on. And that's a two-part process in the spring. It starts with a basically an approval and then the the final vote to go forward and set the motion and process. Once that happens, then it then goes back to everyone to then start the ball rolling from spring, because at that point in time, at the further right section of that that chart, as we move to the summer, that's when we're, you know, a few months out from the actual doors opening at the school. And we'll go from there. Any questions?
Yeah. The in the previous presentation, I should have asked it then, but nine hundred seventy one students spread over how many classrooms?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, he said.
Okay, that's a pretty good ratio. That's it. Thanks.
And and also generally speaking, as if you've followed any of our boundary processes before with either Blue Lake or Garcia High School, we don't look to fill the school a hundred percent right out of the gate. And generally, as a as a rule of thumb, the highest grades that would be moving into the particular schools, like the fifth grade, students at the the schools that would be part of that would generally have the option to remain at the schools that they were. But what we do is we look at giving a little bit of a cushion room, because as I mentioned earlier, we always see students coming back to the, when we open up a new school and we we like to have accommodate them.
So are you suggesting that the nine seventy one is not the maximum?
Well, it's it's the maximum based upon the the fish, the Florida inventory of schoolhouses for the particular school in terms of the seats in the school. So if we if the school ever gets to that, then it would be considered a hundred percent full, which right now, you know, that Golden Grove is 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 pushing that. They they came down a little bit in enrollment. Locksahatchee Groves isn't at that, but they do have a large ESE population at that particular school. So their their spaces has to be really looked at academically as well in terms of what served at the school.
Okay.
Where where's the data formed from that you guys use?
Okay, so the the data that we actually use is every single year, our geographic information system group, what they do is they take every student address and we locate it on a map. So we have their exact location of who they are, what grade they're in, and where they'll be mitigating to. And we do that first preliminary on the eleventh day of enrollment. It's just so we can kind of get a look at how we compare to our enrollment projections. And then we take that official count or benchmark enrollment count in October. And that's what we base our then one-year enrollment projections on for school budget for the following year. And then, as I mentioned, in the spring, then we do a full five years out.
So what you have is you have where they live now and you also have where they're going to school.
Correct.
Okay.
And we have where they're zoned to go to school. So figure, you know, right here, as we're standing here, you'd be zoned for that particular school. But that particular student may attend a charter school. They may be homeschooled or private school, private schools we don't have, but homeschool or another
Sure.
school in the district on choice. But we have to look at the residing students in the area, because they can come back and we have to have the seats to be able to provide for them.
How do you figure into your calculations homes that are under construction but not yet in line or occupied? And by spring of twenty six, when you start doing your zone plans, will you have more better information on those projections?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things that we've been doing, especially with large developments in the district like Arden, Westlake, and then even for some of the other areas, Lock Haven that was just beside Arden. What we've been doing has been tracking the actual development process. I work closely with the the GIS team for for Westlake. And I know they have now a new system that they can get monthly updates on certificates of occupancy. And we've actually created a chart and a table that I can track the certificates of occupancy, how many remaining units are left in each development, how many are to be built. And then also, what I mentioned, those geocoded students, we then compare that to the actual warm bodies. So we we have the certificates of occupancy, we have the warm bodies. And then we also have, the county does a student generation rate. So they have a particular rate for types of units, be it single-family home, townhome, whatnot. So we do a three-way comparison on all all of those. And we can kind of track to see how we're actually coming in as compared to the student generation rate. So for Westlake, we're actually pretty close. For areas like Avenir and Arden, it was through the roof. It was well beyond the the student generation rate. And a lot of that is is economics, pricing of homes, location, things like that. But we do track that as well. And then we also get updates on, so for the new portion of the Oaks, I know we just received information that they will be starting on that and kind of track that through the process.
Are you saying that Avenir has a higher student per household ratio than Westlake?
Yeah, they 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 actually, they they had a quite the boom in in that area as well as as well as Arden.
Larger homes.
Not necessarily that. I mean, some some are and some are price points, things like that. And it just it just depends on the time and time of, you know, when it happened, the timing of it all. And that's why we're, we keep close track of this, because Westlake has been going, you know, really on an upward on an upward trend. And then this kind of year, they're kind of slowed up a little bit. But that doesn't mean that you don't have the students there to to do the school. And that's why I had mentioned it's it's really critical this next year, when we have our enrollment counts, to see how we are doing as a whole district and then also looking at these large developments through the district and see how they're individually impacting the area.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Who's next?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Again, thank you for having us today and allowing us to present and kind of showcasing again on what we have for you coming soon.
Good evening. I'm Maria Bishop, Chief Academic Officer. And we're here to provide you with a little bit of information. It's definitely very early on yet. So first, we have the plans and all that before we even start with the needs assessment and seeing what is actually what we're planning on for the new school.
You know, as we're thinking about, you asked your question about the after-school and any other type of choice programming or any type of program that's definitely still in the talking stages. So as we're getting closer to really unifying what it's going to look like and kind of taking a look at who the administrator will be for the school, and at that point, we'll have a better plan as to what we would be able to provide in service.
The curriculum.
Yep. So all that standard, so it'll be elementary school, grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Depending on the needs, when we do the needs assessment, we'll see if we need pre-K classes as well. Any other kind of special programs as well, because we're going to take a look at the students that are in Golden, already enrolled in Golden Grove and Locksahatchee Groves that will be coming over here and seeing what needs they have to determine any future plans. But normally, we do have extended care, after-school care. The curriculum is standard. You know, we have ELA, math, science, all our classrooms come standardized, there's standard equipment in them. Modern technology as far as like smart boards and computers and all of that for our students will have. The nice thing about having a nice new school is everything will be new.
Have any magnet components?
That's all part of looking at the community and the students and seeing what the needs are.
So that comes later.
That comes later. That comes later.
It depends on this the student demographics or or how do you how do you figure that?
Well, magnet programs, it's it's complicated, because we have to look at the entire district and we have to look at a feeder pattern, because it all has to be in alignment. Like, we look at the high schools to see what programs the high schools offer. And then we would need to align if we want to do something different for the elementary school. And then it has to go into the middle school and then the high school so students have a track. So all that will come later. But as far as that, you know, we'll give the students everything that all the other schools have, all the other schools and their students have as well. There could be ESE programming. You know, they'll have their fine arts, music, art, PE, all of that's very standard, driven by the number of students that that you have.
Who makes those decisions?
Well, we look at, we have a lot of standard allocations, depending on the number of students that are enrolled in the school. We'll determine the number of classrooms, we'll determine the number of PE units, music, art. We have formulas that we use at the district level to determine how many units will be at the school. But every school usually has PE, art, music, what am I missing?
Media.
Media center, media. So those are standard.
Do you have the facilities in the building to accommodate?
Yes. Yes, elementary schools all come equipped a standard way, that would be Sir James, yes.
All all the same.
Yes. Yes, they're all the same.
First floor?
Yes, yeah, they're all beautiful. And I know I live in Arden, so I'm we're very happy with our school there. And I've had the luxury of touring it and it's beautiful, very bright.
Can I ask how, this is just a me question. I've got a I've got a four-year-old in VPK right now and an almost three-year-old, you know, right right behind him. How does the grading work with a brand-new school? So it's not graded yet, because it's brand-new.
Right.
You know, so and like me and my brain, even though I, Westlake, it it would be pulling him out of a A school, put him into a question mark school. How does that work? How quickly do we get turn this into an A school?
Well, we'd have to have the students enrolled one year and then starting to take the state assessments. So I believe so. I believe so. It's after year one, as soon as the students take the assessments and they're able to apply the grade calculations, the state by the state.
Excellent.
Who does the grading, the state?
The state.
Based on grades?
Based on our students, student performance on the state assessments. There's a formula with cells.
They go, that score is going to.
Follow them. We look at achievement levels and ELA, math, science. We look at learning gains also. Third grade ELA has their own cell, science. So it's a standard calculation. And so I know that the schools in the area do have pre-K. And I know that there's a pretty high demand, so we'll take a look at that.
I've got one in right now.
Yes, right. And then there'll be some opportunities, meetings with the community to kind of hear what they want to say. So we try to involve them, even with the principal selection. They will have some say, right? We'll conduct, usually conduct meetings. It's a pro, we have a process for everything. Standardized process.
Yeah, VPK is amazing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we have any questions? Is, I'm sorry, is that the presentation? We're in the question phase? Well, first of all, amazingly, they're bringing a much-needed school. Do we have any questions from council for either Mr. Dolan or?
I do, for Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Dolan? And does Ms. Andrews want to say a few words?
Yes.
Okay.
Care, please.
We love Ms. Andrews.
And good evening to our mayor and vice mayor, council and staff. I'm Marsha Andrews, your school board member. I'm very excited about the new school that's coming to Westlake. And I want to thank the Education Advisory Board from Westlake. You all in the audience, you've been working on this. We're having this official meeting with the council tonight. But I want to thank your Educational Advisory Board for doing that work, getting the information, working with us over the last few months to make sure this presentation was just what you needed. But there's still a lot of work to be done. We're excited about the new school. We're excited about the parent voices that will come forth within the next few months as we work toward the boundaries. Surely, you heard about the ABC Boundary Committee? That's just a committee that's actually overseeing the process. But they're looking to hear from the parents within the community where children will be pulled from for this new school, mainly right here in Westlake. So parent voices are very, very important as we move through all of these processes. You're going to have a beautiful school. And it was interesting, the Education Advisory Board told me that they want everything that Saddle View has. And so I've been working closely with them. I'm pretty excited to continue to work to make sure that parents are informed, that we inform the the community as well as the elected officials here on the council. And this is your school. You do have a voice as we go forward with selecting a principal, selecting programs, just looking at the school and making sure we build it from the bottom to the top with the voices of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Going down before Mr. Dolan comes up. I also just wanted to have our Education Advisory Board members stand up, because we have actually a few of them in here tonight. We meet again this Thursday at six PM. But Mr. Dolan, I have a question for you. Sure. For the gates for the facility, will they be closed at certain times of the day where nobody can come on campus? They, there will always be an open gate. That's the state standards allows for a the driveway gate. It'll probably be the gate on green, that driveway entrance will be available. And there's a sidewalk right there, so that anybody walking will be able to get in through there. There are school resource officers on campus, so they will be able to keep track of that. But the gates, like, for example, we don't really have the two gates, the one down where the golf cart path was. That gate will be closed. It'll be open at, what, seven fifteen, that kind of thing, and closed up at eight oh five and then reopen back at, you know, two twenty, whatever that time time is. And and then close back up as soon as that's over. Yeah, during during the after hours, it will generally be closed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then for traffic, will there be a blinking light system for twenty mile an hour during school? Let out and.
Well, there's there's a lot of features that go into determining the a school zone, right? That's essentially what we're looking for is a school zone. A lot of that does actually come down to the city. And and again, I think that we will certainly be happy to work with you towards that, because we recognize that, from our perspective, at least from the facility side, I I want as much control over that as as probably you do. So we would certainly work with you. as, as probably you do. So we would certainly work with you to accommodate because anything within the public grid or it really does belong to you guys. If there's a, there's a flasher, if there's a, you know, a crossing, we would, we would probably engage in, in helping support that, fund that. But yeah, as far as the location and the willingness to do that, that would certainly be the city.
Well, just a clarification, it wouldn't be the city, it would be Sid.
Similar priority. And then I envision probably traffic or school crossing guards at that particular intersection of Persimmon and Green just as people are pulling in and out just to maybe stop.
There, there could be, there could be, oftentimes with elementary schools, we do less in, in the high school areas. But yes, there would likely be a crossing guard. The question being, where is that? That, that still remains to be seen because I looked at it and said, yes, as you said, green and persimmon might be ideal. But is it really going to be the place where we have the most traffic? Or is it coming at Ilex and Persimmon? That heavier trafficked intersection, is that the one where we want to focus that? That will be, and I believe you have the sheriff's office with you.
Yes.
The sheriff's office will help us determine the best location for that. And, and the school district does organize that with them.
Okay. And then one more thing is I know Dr. Tompkins is here. He's also on our Education Advisory Board. He sits on the school district's facility board. I wanted to see if it's possible for our EA being members, whenever the school district has time for us to tour the Saddle View, for them to see it because they're going to be an integral part as we go forward. Also, the city manager.
I was going to say, if it's okay, I'll work through the, the city manager and, and we can certainly accommodate that.
I have two quick questions. You can back your slide up a few. I just, it's a silly one, but.
Oh, sorry. Keep going.
Yeah, I'll tell you when we get there. Okay, stop.
Good.
Those three purple circles that look like playgrounds, I don't know what they are.
Okay, yeah.
What are they?
Looks like playgrounds.
Those are playgrounds.
Is that, is that what that is, playground?
Yeah. Sorry, I keep pointing over to the gentleman over in the corner. That's, that's my project manager.
Are those like climbing, like a climbing situation?
Yeah, and they'll, they'll likely be the different stages, like a K-2 type of playground, three, five playground. And again, that's why when we talked about whether or not.
Is this something that's Saddle View now, like in a row like that?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then lastly, you know, we, we spoke about pulling from Loxgroves and Golden Groves and potentials of different programs to have here in Westlake. Have we considered gifted, like, like in H.L. Johnson? Is that, is that a consideration for possibly having a gifted program here in Westlake?
Have the students, see what the needs of the students are.
So that's all a TBD. All right, very great.
We strive to meet the needs of all of our students, so once we have them in our building, we'll assess the needs.
Excellent.
And again, I look at it from the perspective of, I, we're doing classrooms that can be accommodating of any number of things. You know, some of the ESE classrooms might be a fewer number of students per classroom, but we have the space to accommodate that. And there's always adjustments as the years go on.
Ms. Andrews, did you have one more thing to say?
Just an additional comment. I worked with Mrs. Ross, principal of Saddle View, just today. She was sorry she couldn't make it. I told her we really didn't need her. But she's been working with Chair Kaplan as well as your Educational Advisory Board, and now that it's not as busy since we've opened the schools for this school year, she is ready to set the schedule for each one of the members to come over and see the school. And your board has been ready to do it. So we had to make sure that, you know, everything was working smoothly and everyone could look at their schedule so they could meet the needs that they have as well as the school. But Mrs. Ross is absolutely excited to show off her school to all of the Education Advisory Board. So if you can get the appointments set up, she's ready.
Put me in, Coach. I would love to see it. Thank you.
And one of the other items that was talked about, we've talked about the, when the principal gets selected and, and of course, the name of the school and the mascot and the colors. One of the great things about starting construction in March of '26 and then selecting the principal and going through that process, there will be ample time to be able to make sure that the, the name of the school, the mascot, the colors even. You know, we, we build, we build big boxes and then it comes to colors later on down the line. So we will have the opportunity to make sure that, as mentioned earlier, the community will be a part of this. It's not just going to be, hey, here's the colors we're giving you. You will, you will be playing an active role in a lot of those features. I say you, the entire community.
Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Sure.
First of all, on this site plan, can you point out what is the perimeter security provisions will be? Cameras, fencing, whatever.
I'll, I'll leave it as, security in general is, is taken very seriously. Goes without saying, right? Yes, the, the obvious things. There will be fence along the perimeter, all along the canal area, right up to the front. There are the both entry, drive entrances, the bus entrance and the car entrance will have double gates that can prop open when that needed and then be closed back locked. Our resource officer will make sure of that. And then there will be a perimeter fence along the front, along Persimmon and along Green. And again, it's a matter of the aesthetics. We want to try to make sure that we accommodate the best look for the school. We do need to keep it secure. Some, some, we might do black vinyl fence as opposed to your traditional galvalume-looking chain fence. But again, these are features that we can work through with, with our, our staff on a cost perspective and as well the community because we do want to make sure that, as I mentioned, the, the school needs to meet the, the community vernacular.
Okay, and the other question Ms. Andrews mentioned, parents would be in contact with the school in the development, I guess, of curriculum. Do you have a contact, an email contact for who parents might be able to get in touch with?
Yeah, as far as curriculum is concerned?
Well, in, in terms of what they may have questions about for the.
Yeah, I would say, I'm going to the last slide. Right here, we have a phone number for Dr. RC and the region, the north region will handle that information. And if, if necessary, I'm certain we can get an email address to be able to put out there.
Sorry, we actually have an email address that we use for a public comment that can be taken in. We can, at, at this time, we can forward them to the correct departments when they come in, but that's public commenting@palmbeachschools.org. And we monitor that and we, as Ms. Andrews mentioned, we've got the rounding process. When any parent or anyone has a question, they can go ahead and send it to that email address. We get the, the answer back to them and not only do we provide the parent or essentially with the answer, but we also provide the school board with all of those comments that come in so that they have them to review when they were reviewing the attendance zone as well.
Can you repeat that email?
I'm just going to repeat it in the mic. It's public dot comment@palmbeachschools.org.
Org. And I will make sure that we convey that over to the city manager so we can.
Yeah, we'll get, you could, we'll get that to the city and then we could shoot it out on our app and on our website and all that jazz.
Are we expecting it to be a uniform school?
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Public comment, I guess.
Let's make sure that everybody stays muted.
Yes.
Okay.
No questions.
I think we're all set.
We, we would all like to thank you all very much for allowing us the opportunity and we're welcome to continue the conversation.
Mr. Dolan, it's great to see you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Please send public comment, still standing there.
Yeah, sure. Let's open up for public comment. Why not? Dr. Kaplan?
Anita Kaplan, 5459 Santa Rosa Lane, Westlake. I'm also the chair of the Educational Advisory Board. I just want to extend my thanks for coming and for having this as part of the council meeting. I think it makes a big difference to get the word out to the community. I'm still grappling with this issue of boundaries and zoning. It's a little bit different than what I grew up in, in Massachusetts, if you can hear my accent, excuse me. But is there a guideline or an ordinance or a rule? How do boundaries and zonings actually work? Can a student just go to any school anywhere? And is there an infinite amount of spots available? No.
Both are no.
That's my question.
So how, how it works with our, our school district is your zone school, the attendance zones that you see on a map, that's where the students are slated to go to school and you should attend your, your zone school. However, as a school district, we have choice. We also have controlled open enrollment. Each and every year, as I had mentioned, when we come up with the enrollment projections and also our enrollment counts, we compare that to the capacity at the school. We worked with the school choice department and we helped determine the number of seats that would be available in schools that are below that, that 100% capacity. So think of it as, you can't put more in than there's space for the particular students. But we do allow students to move to schools throughout the district based upon controlled open enrollment and school choice. But as their zones are, they, that's where they're, they're looking, being attended.
I guess for me, I have one additional question. We're talking about Westlake schools. So when we talk, I'm hearing a lot of talk about Loxahatchee Groves and a lot about Golden Groves. And not both of those schools are in the Westlake area. So I'm wondering what should be done for people that are from other areas, particularly, I guess, Loxahatchee and the acreage? Should we be inviting other people to these meetings because these discussions really flow beyond the boundaries of what are the schools in Westlake, which are Loxahatchee Groves, Osceola Creek, and what am I missing?
Western Pines.
Western Pines.
Western. No, Osceola Creek.
They're outside of Mount.
That's on.
So that, you know, it's, we're not just talking about Westlake schools here. We're talking about schools in other areas. I mean, it's all part of the school district, but, but it's not part of Westlake as I understand it.
There are parts in Westlake that's Osceola Creek.
We are certainly.
Change.
West. Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
So as, as we look at generating studies for the Attendance Boundary Committee, once we have that collection of studies and who may or may not be impacted, we actually through our parent link, we reach out to all of the families in the particular areas and we invite them to come to the meetings. And depending on how many people we have, how many zones are impacted, that could be many, many meetings over different areas in order so that we reach out to absolutely everyone multiple times. They will all have the ability to speak at the meetings, should they decide and, and want to or have the time. And as I mentioned, that public dot comment@palmbeachschools.org, they can also field all those questions to us. We can get those back out. Those questions, as I mentioned, not only go to the school board, but they also go to the Attendance Boundary Committee. Because if people can't make the meeting, they need to know what the pulse of the community is on how they feel about the particular zones. So that's, that's, there's a lot of outreach.
But you have a school here that's almost smack dab in the middle of Westlake. Is it fair to presume that if, that maybe 80% of that school will be populated by Westlake resident students and maybe 20% from outside?
It, it's, it's hard to tell, but just, yeah, just basically just straight geography. I mean, it's smack dab in the middle of your community, right between the two zones of the schools that's going to pull from both, both schools. So there's a, a good indication that the majority of the students probably will be from Golden Grove or Loxahatchee Groves. And as I had mentioned, as we review surrounding demographics in the area, that'll determine on, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to look at other areas to be impacted. But what we do is we bring forward all those studies and let the community and the Attendance Boundary Committee and the community decide on which direction they want to go.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. Crystal Lexima, 15211 Wildwood Circle. I am an Education Advisory Board member as well. I do have a couple of questions. So I know that it's been brought up that there's going to be these ABC meetings and lots of meetings parents can join and, you know, how are we going to get correspondence for that? Is that something that, like our city clerk or the EAB board has to reach out and figure out, like, what schedule's going to look like? I know when I go online, you can kind of see like the tentative schedule for other areas. So is that something that we're going to get a blast to the city and now the city disseminates to all of the?
Those, those, sorry, those EAB meetings, those, those aren't city meetings. Those are strictly school board meetings.
Right, so how do we find out about it?
So the correspondence would be from.
Because if parents are invited to it.
So the, when we have all these Attendance Boundary Committees meetings set up, not only do we notify the parents, but we also notify the cities, the members of the, the members of the county involved, the schools that are involved as well. One of the ways that we found that parents can also go is to our demographics and student enrollment website. But we have specifically a website for PBCS or PBC Schools Zones dot info.
Absolutely. Just put like your headquarters in and it tells you.
Now, the PB Schools Zones dot info site is where you go to, where you can, as a parent or any member of the community, go to monitor the school rezoning process, including the proposed Attendance Zone studies, when the future meetings are, the dates, times of said meetings, if it's going to be a virtual meeting versus an in-person meeting or both. And again, that with the public comment, you can certainly go and be involved.
Can I ask that you provide all those resources to our clerk and then she'll get them out on our official?
Absolutely.
That would be amazing.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
And I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Lexima.
Sorry, got 45 seconds. Okay, then my next question is, there's a lot of talk about finding out the demographics and the enrollment in Loxgroves and Golden Groves. But I just want to make sure that we're also taking into account a lot of the other schools, like the mayor said, H.L. Johnson is our feeder school for gifted. So that means a lot of, a lot of Westlake students, like my son, go to H.L. Johnson, meaning now the siblings go there because they, you know, parents don't want to do multiple drop-offs. So I want to make sure that's taken into account as well as acreage pines because principal is here and she can attest that they are bursting at the seams with ESE students and pre-K students. So I just want to make sure that when we're thinking about numbers and demographics and what the needs are, we're not just looking at those two schools. We're looking at all the schools that are also impacted by Westlake students.
Look at that. Thank you, Ms. Lexima.
What's that?
The domino effect on some of the demographics.
Certain students to Golden Grove.
When you said bursting at the seams, does that mean with Westlake students or just bursting at the seams?
But I can say that the majority of my friends and people in my area do want to go to acreage pines and our waitlist are not able to get in because they're. I had 110 choice applications for 10 seats. Wow, okay.
Ms. Lex.
All right. Hi, Alicia Torres, 5847 Whopper Will Circle. I also write Westlake Wanderer, the blog. I just want to say thank you to the ABC crew that came today. You guys are so impressive. You're so knowledgeable. You know our street names relative to the cardinal directions and you know our neighborhoods that are coming and growing and being built. My question actually had to do with jobs. I don't know if this is the right group to ask, but I'm just curious if anybody knows how many jobs we can expect to add to the city through the school, when the application process would start and if there's any preference given to residents. So I don't know if anybody could answer that.
Anybody want to?
Yeah, quick for me, babe. So Joseph Sanchez, Chief Operating Officer.
Joseph Sanchez, Chief Operating Officer. HR is not my area, but I'll give it a try. The, you know, obviously we have a, we have unions in Palm Beach County, if you didn't know that already, right? CTA is the biggest one. So there's a lot of opportunities, there's going to be, there's a process for hiring and filling schools. The principal of that new school will be able to take some teachers from their previous school, assuming they're principal of a different school. And there's also, there'll be applications from other people. So there'll be, there's a, and what unions is a big part of the seniority. So the seniority is going to play a big part of who gets to go to this new school. There's a lot of other jobs at the school as well, custodians, there's, you know, there's food service staff, you know, there's other positions in the school. Again, those are unions, right? So there's some seniority involved with that, but there's probably going to be some opportunities in those positions as well.
Do you have a rough idea of how many jobs overall?
Um, I don't know. How many? You know.
562 children and I employ 95 people on that campus.
A lot of jobs.
Administrators, cafeteria, custodial, teacher assistants, VCK.
We're looking at almost twice that in terms of enrollment.
Well, yeah, not the first year. First year probably, it's probably going to be closer to 600 or something like that and then it'll probably grow. And anybody looking for a job is a school bus driver, let me know right now because I'll hire you the spot.
I was doing lots of jobs.
All right. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you so much for that information and thank you, Ms. Torres, for the question. That's great. Any other public comment? Okay.
Well, you're a college school.
I'm sorry, you must be present to make a public comment. I apologize for whoever is online, but we don't accept comments over the airwaves. I apologize. That being said, I want to thank you again for coming in and making that presentation. Our youth is our future and this school will certainly aid in that, coming from somebody who has a four and a two-year-old. I truly appreciate it. Thank you. That's it. Instead of moving forward with the consent agenda, we're still on presentations, I'm going to ask that PBSO comes up. That way we can let them get back to keeping us safe and then I'll have our chief come up afterwards. Thank you so much again, guys. Sarge?
How you doing? Good evening, Sergeant Tadde with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Thank you to the board and the citizens of Westlake. We're here to presentate the numbers for the month of October. We had a total of 1,200 business checks, 238 traffic stops and calls to service excluding the traffic stops and the business checks, 274, with a total of 1,744 calls to service.
Okay.
All right. Eighty-four of those calls, 84% of the calls were self-initiated calls from our deputies. We had eight traffic crashes for the month of October.
Eight?
Yes.
Wow.
We had a total of 29 citations that were issued, written warnings, 207, for a total of 236. Again, these calls and these activities are self-initiated by the deputies.
So a traffic stop is considered a call for service?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So say that again, 230 total with?
236.
Total?
Yes.
And eight citations?
Twenty-nine citations.
Twenty-nine citations.
Two-hundred-and-seven written warnings.
Okay, about 10%.
When it relates to crimes, again, like we mentioned before, it's non-existent. The deputies are doing a good job in self-initiating calls and making sure that they're checking out with anything that might look suspicious and also making contact with the citizens through either traffic stops and business checks and educating the public.
Okay.
And any questions for us?
Any other, any other crime, any theft, any?
Nope.
Okay. I like it. Thank you, Sergeant. Any questions for?
Yeah, how is the citizens on patrol doing and integrating with your staff?
They're doing well. I mean, like you said, you guys added a traffic unit to the city and just by talking with the deputy, everything seems well. The contacts with the cities are receptive to us educating them on traffic safeties and everything else.
Thank you.
I know you guys are aware, but the orchard's gate, exit gate is still down. So if you guys could increase some activity at night there, appreciate it.
Yeah, we have one of your deputies over here, Deputy Carrera, he'll be doing that tonight. Make sure you guys are safe.
I did hear that there was an incident at Publix. Do you know anything about it?
That was the?
No, sir.
It wasn't simple.
Oh, wasn't ours?
No, it wasn't.
Oh. Fair information. Thank you.
All right. Sergeant Tadde, thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you. Have a great night, guys. Have a wonderful one.
Chief?
That's so nice. Good evening, everyone. First, I wanted to thank you for inviting Station 22 to attend the luncheon.
My pleasure. It was our pleasure.
Yes, it was our pleasure to attend, but everybody enjoyed it and the presentations were very informative and educational. Everybody took away something from it. So that was a very unique experience for the crews that work at Station 22. So it was very cool. So thank you for thinking about it.
Wouldn't have it any other way.
We appreciate that. Thank you. We appreciate the partnership, we really do. So for the month of October, we had a total of 54 emergency responses to the city of Westlake. Just over 61% of those were medical calls, at 33 medical calls. We only had four traffic accidents that we responded to. So they, PBSO responded to eight, four of those complained of injuries, apparently. The average dispatch handling time was 49 seconds, average turnout time, 48 seconds, average travel time, four minutes and 52 seconds, for a total average response time of six minutes and 29 seconds. So we're hanging in there right about six, six and a half minutes.
Okay.
Any questions?
When can we expect to see our city seal on your trucks?
Well, I am so happy that you are excited about that. We are excited too and I think it's great. And years ago, we had this with other municipalities that we served, but through attrition and getting new trucks and building new stations, we kind of lost that. So they're bringing it back. I will try to get an update, though, on the timeline as to when they plan on. They were kind of waiting to collect it from all of the municipalities that wanted to participate and some of us district chiefs are like, why do you have to wait? We got it from our city, send it to print, let's do it and let's have an unveiling and let's get on with it. So I'll try to get a timeline, though.
Excited.
Okay, it is exciting. It's very cool.
Are we going to be invited to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure. Thanks.
All right. Let's move forward with the consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless the council member requests them, in which the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, second by Councilman Warner. Roll call. Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us Resolution 2025-31, support of the construction of 60th Street North from Seminole Pratt Road to State Road 7. City Attorney?
Please read by title.
Resolution, the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, expressing its support of the construction of 60th Street North from Seminole Pratt Whitney Road to State Road 7, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
Madam Manager, you want a quick update on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Council identified this item during part of the strategic planning process. You all expressed the need to show your support and encourage the complete construction of 60th Street North from Seminole Pratt Whitney Road to State Road 7 as a necessary roadway to support the east and west connectivity. So once we pass this tonight, we will send this off to Palm Beach County to show our support.
Excellent. Council discussion, you may.
Wanted to see if it's possible, maybe for yourself to, once this is adopted, present it to the county commission?
Sure.
Because we need to have more of a presence on the county. To say, we need this road.
Yeah, I'm in.
That's it.
Count me, count on me. I love getting front of the commission. Okay, if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-31, supporting the construction of 60th Street North from Seminole Pratt Whitney Road to State Road 7.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gleason, second by Councilman Warner. Roll call. Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us Resolution 2025-33, Infomark LLC Services Contract Fee Increase, one full-time personnel, don't let that scare you, but one full-time personnel for housing assistance program. City Attorney, read by title, please.
Resolution, the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, approving and authorizing the mayor and vice mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding between Infomark LLC and the City of Westlake for additional personnel, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
City Manager, you want to explain this one?
In keeping with council consensus, to have a dedicated individual to manage the housing assistance program, Infomark, the current management company, is presenting a memorandum of understanding for one additional full-time personnel. The additional compensation shall be 140,250 annually, in which the position will be accounted for in the annual budget. It has been identified that this position may be funded by the Happy Special Revenue Fund and this program would allow 7% of administrative costs to be paid from the fund. As of October 15, 2025, it is noted it is approximately 4.7 million in the fund.
Perfectly clear, this is not coming out of our regular budget. This is being paid for strictly from the Happy Funds, the Happy Programs, and we'll finally have a dedicated human to administer the Happy Program out of the Happy Funds. This is a payroll. This is not, this is coming out of our budget, it's coming out of the Happy Dollars. And I must also ask that that number, which sounds large, must be conflated to include?
French benefits.
Benefits and 401K and everything. So it's all-inclusive. But again, it's not coming out of our budget, it's coming out of the Happy Dollars and that account's got way too much money in it, as it is. So I'm very excited to have somebody who will administer this program so that maybe my inbox won't be inundated with people who are having trouble navigating the Happy Process. Council discussion, any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I support this resolution. I support the designation of one of the Infomark members to be devoted 100% to this particular program. What I would like to see in addition, it may not be part of this resolution or maybe direction from the city manager, when we get invoicing from Infomark, it's just a flat monthly fee. So they take the total amount that I believe is in this resolution, break it down by 12 months and that's what we see on each invoice. I would like to see better reporting from Infomark on this particular position that we're speaking about, what this staff member is doing, what are they doing for marketing? How many of the, how many applicants are they dealing with? How many loans are they actually committing to and how many are actually being consummated? I think we've gotten, we've received very little information from Infomark on how they do business and how we, for what we pay, and I'd like to see some actual results in their monthly invoice and.
I've made the note, we've spoken in the past about this. I've reached out to Infomark to look into giving us additional detail. However, I do think some of the information that you just mentioned is something that I can provide to you as far as the status of the Happy Programs, applicants, things of that nature. So that's something that I can provide to you on a weekly basis or on a monthly basis of what we've seen in the last month as far as closings, things like that.
Okay, I'd like to see that in relation to what their monthly invoice is, so we see what's being accomplished with the amount of money that we're being, that they're being paid.
I can take it back to them.
So you want the salary to justify the work, is basically what you're saying?
Well, that's a whole nother issue. Because, you know, there's a lot more to Infomark than just this one position. But in terms of this, I want to be able to see that what we're paying them is providing what we're getting in return.
So there's a job description for this situation.
I understand all that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, do we actually know, other than what's, other than loans that are being completed, do we know what's being done in marketing? How many applicants are being, have applied and all of the effort that goes into that?
So like a monthly report from the person who's doing the job, based on what the job is requesting?
Yes, that would be much.
So that, again, that necessarily wouldn't come from Infomark, but it would come from either the individual that's handling the position or from the city manager?
Yeah, and let's just be clear, the city manager is our contact point and she does implement our policies. So it would, it actually should come from the city manager if we're talking about a council-manager relationship when it comes down.
Correct. This will be an employee that?
Works for the city manager.
Reports directly to the city manager and that is under the city manager's purview. But I would like you to include that in your report to us is, you know, how well this, if we're in essence hiring a housing director to administer the Happy Program, I'd like to know how well they're doing.
Yep, absolutely. I'll continue to do that because actually I think I just started in our last week's report, you received an update of how many Happy Applications were for the month of October. So I'll continue to do that and add a little extra for you all.
You know, and also improvements with the program.
Absolutely.
They're out there waving the Happy Flag and the whole nine yards, so. Wonderful. Can I get a motion?
I'll approve of Resolution 2025-33, authorizing the mayor or vice mayor to execute the MOU between Infomark and the City of Westlake.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, second by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call. Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have before us Resolution 2025-32, adopting the 2024 Revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Resolution, the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, approving and adopting the 2024 Revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan, providing for the pursuit of funding and implementation, providing for the support of the local mitigation strategy process, providing for transmittal to Palm Beach County and providing for an effective date.
Madam Manager, what do you got?
In February 2020, City Council approved Resolution to establish guidelines for local mitigation and approving the Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy. The Local Mitigation Strategy, also known as LMS, is a unified, coordinated effort among county and municipal government to reduce the county's vulnerability to the impacts of identified natural and man-made hazards. The strategy serves as a basis for comprehensive mitigation planning, project identification and prioritization, and provides assistance to project sponsors in securing and allocating available federal, state, local and other disaster mitigation assistance funds. FEMA mandates that all LMS programs revise their plan every five years to bring them into compliance with federal guidelines. This item is a bit of a housekeeping, as it should have been something that we reviewed last year. They are prompting us to adopt the LMS strategy. So before, use Resolution 2025-32 to formally adopt the 2025 Revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan.
Do we have any questions from the council? Okay, there's no further discussion, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-32 for adopting the 2024 Revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy Plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, second by Councilman Gleason. Roll call. Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us a City of Westlake lighting recognition schedule, which is a first time ever. And I could only assume this is our direction to the district, to light the monument signs and the roundabouts, different colors to recognize, whether it's Rest Cancer Month or Suicide Prevention. Um, let's open up for council discussion, and is there anything we want to add?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
You may.
Um, I'd like to request, uh, to add Law Enforcement Week, it falls during the week of May fifteenth, um, to the lighting schedule. It's a week that is observed across the country to honor the men and women who protect our communities.
What are the colors?
Enter, blue. And to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice, lighting our city in blue is a simple but meaningful way to show support for the officers who serve and live here every day, as long as with, along with their families.
Absolutely, what are the dates?
It's May fifteenth, the week of, so May fifteenth, but they do it the whole week of the May fifteenth.
Let's add the, the, absolutely, a hundred percent, um, let's add the week of the fifteenth of May, blue. What else we got?
And my fourth of July.
That's there.
Good start. Week of fourth of July.
There's no week for.
I mean, we could do green for St. Patty's Day.
What month?
Talking to the city, I think we want to stick with.
You'd have to share it with pink.
Well, and this is just direction from the city, we don't really have control, um, but we can ask, you know? So, okay, yeah, that's a good start.
Good start. You want fire?
Do we have a fire?
Fire is October, we have breast cancer, maybe we could do pink Enraid, I don't know.
Red, yeah, it's not that.
Um. It's September.
It's September.
So we, we do a suicide prevention.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we can add, you know.
But then we gotta give the city, like, what they do, what they.
Well, I, I mean.
We could do half and half.
I think we should recognize them, for sure, it's, um.
A week?
You know, let's, let's, we pick a week in September and do red.
Okay.
Perfect, all right, very good.
Firefighter.
Yeah, appreciation.
Absolutely.
Uh-huh.
As a suggestion, Council, how about we do it the week of, uh, whenever September eleventh falls on?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Excellent idea. Okay. That, there's no action required on that, that's just.
No.
Correct.
We have before us Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty four, Solid Waste and Recyclable Collection Services Agreement between City of Westlake and Waste Management, Inc. City Attorney, please read by title.
Resolution to the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida approving and authorizing the Mayor and Vice Mayor to execute the Solid Waste and Recyclable Collection Services Agreement between the City of Westlake and Waste Management, Inc. of Florida, providing for conflict severability and effective dates.
City Manager, Madam, City Manager.
This resolution will authorize the city to enter into a five-year agreement with Waste Management, Inc. to provide comprehensive solid waste, recycling, and vegetative waste collection services citywide. The agreement grants Waste Management an exclusive franchise to handle residential and commercial waste collection beginning December one, twenty twenty five, ensuring consistent service standards and regulatory compliance. It includes twice week, twice a week residential collection, weekly recycling, and yard waste pickup, and support for city-sponsored events.
Thank you, do we have any discussion from the Council?
Yes. Um, in the current agreement we have with Waste Management, there's a provision, the escalator provision is CPI, the annual increase is CPI, it's the Consumer Price Index, uh, how much that has increased over the year, or five percent, whichever is less. This agreement is a flat five percent, and I'd like to see us go back to the current provision of, uh, the lesser of CPI, um, or, or five percent.
We, we have a representative from Solid Waste here.
Um, do you, if I can make a comment?
You may.
Um, just so we're all aware, CPI on Waste Management, this past year has only twice dropped below five percent, every other month has been five point one five, five point one three. Um, so I would caution on that, but I understand what you're saying.
Hmm, what are you saying?
That it would actually be more.
I'm saying whichever is less.
Oh, whichever is less.
That's what the.
But I, I don't know, I don't know if it's.
I mean, if it ends up five percent, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
If it's less than that, the CPI, then it should be less, and that's what the agreement now reads. Not this one, the current agreement.
Oh, okay.
Right. Um.
I mean, I, you want to save the, the residents a few dollars, we can, over time.
Let's invite Mr. Sabin to comment.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and, and Council Members and Staff, for the record, Jeff Sabin, Government Affairs Manager for WM. Um, we've worked closely with the city, um, for all these years, but this last year especially so. In working through this process, we've developed and modeled the pricing in which would be, we, we would be concurrent with the trend lines mentioned in the CPI, and the way we're looking forward is just that, it, the five percent, it's, it's exceeded five percent in the prior years, and looking forward, it looks like it's trending greater, potentially greater than five percent. So, we came up with a fixed rate, uh, per year, that pretty much caps the rate increase to five percent. So, i- it protects you, and it also gives us a predictability as well, and also for budgeting purposes. You know exactly what the rate's going to be going forward for the next five years. Um, and if, and if the CPI exceeds five percent, which we're, it's, we're capped at five percent.
Right.
So, we looked at it through both views, both, both lenses, and from your perspective, it is really an insurance policy as well. And it, it's also been applied into their local municipalities, most recently as well, through negotiations. So the five percent has been accepted elsewhere, as, as a kind of a cap that's already predetermined, so.
It, uh, it would be remiss of me not to mention that Waste Management has also decreased between what the bid that they won to today, they have decreased their fees.
For the record, that is absolutely correct, under some, uh, reconsideration, uh, especially some pressure and fiduciary responsibility, the mayor and, and has really been focused on this, and yes, we did, we lowered our rate, uh, we split the difference of the ninety-seven, forty-eight cents. But it also accomplishes a couple of things, one, it obviously lowers the rate closer to the, the lowest. Um, but also, it lessens the overall cost to residents, less than, yeah, it, 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 the three, three twenty fours, it comes out to twenty-seven, it's less than that. So that's really a savings, so, yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up, I, I agree and acknowledge your efforts to reduce that fee. Nonetheless, as you say, the trend has been five percent, so what's the objection to including the provision CPI, the increase of CPI, or five percent, whichever is less? If you say CPI has been trending more than five percent, shouldn't be an objection.
It is, it is, well, here's, here's our position, and that is that, out of straight modeling and what we did with the, the pricing to accomplish the rates that we got to, it was based on the five percent per year, so, uh, we pretty much come to the table, we've worked through this, uh, we've gone, we've been over backwards on, in terms of the agreement, and, and also from last year through this year as well, we've worked together, uh, through thick and thin. And we're very proud of that, and our, our five percent is really the one in which we came forward with, so. That, that's our, that was our proposal as well, it was built into the proposal. So, at this point, to vary from something we've really committed from, from the very beginning, what we were asked to do, and also we were asked to present and provide a sample franchise agreement, which we did to your staff, and they've worked very closely with the attorney as well. Our, both staffs have worked very hard on this agreement, and we're very proud of the fact of, it's, uh, the outcome has been to this point, thank you so much.
So are you saying that you would reject the agreement if it was amended to include that CPI provision?
Our agreement that was presented and.
This isn't, yeah, you may, but this, I'm going to be very clear, this is not another opportunity for another bite at the apple.
Thank you.
That's not what this is, this has been negotiated, it's.
No.
Yeah, this is, this has been negotiated through thick and thin, it has been, they've, they've been. It, it, this wasn't an easy road to get to, um, and we're here, and the contract stood at a higher amount. We are now where we are, at a very, very good rate, a very, very competitive rate. All the modeling has been done based on certain figures, um, and to ask them to, to change any aspect of this contract that's been negotiated, I think would be completely out of line.
And Mr. Mayor, just to make another point, I think we're at the point where we have to sign tonight, I think our ninety-day period is up, and I would refer to our attorney, but is it true that the extension that we were given is kind of done? This is our point for signing.
Do you want to clarify for him for?
Signing, um, the agreement.
I would, Zoe, I'll defer to you.
Okay. Yes, tonight is the night, we have no, no additional extensions, our, our contract will be, will be terminated at the end of this month if we don't have something signed tonight.
A question to the City Manager, uh, did, are you the one that negotiated this agreement?
No, I'm not, this was given to the, the powers that be in legal, and so they negotiated, and then the mayor also worked with, uh, when, when the cone of silence was lifted, uh, the mayor worked with Waste Management, ensuring that we got a lower rate.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Council? Being said, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five dash thirty-four, Resolution of the City Council of Westlake approving and authorizing the Mayor Vice Mayor to execute the Solid Waste and Recyclable Collection Services Agreement between the City of Westlake and Westma- Waste Management.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Leonard, second by Councilman Gleason, roll call. Councilman Werner.
No, because of the lack of the CPI provision.
Thank you. Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Let's move forward with Council comments, Councilwoman Leonard.
Uh, Mayor, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and also to our veterans to just recognize and honor them, um, for putting their life on the line and what they've done for our country, so happy Veterans' Day as well.
Councilman Gleason.
Uh, I'll echo that, happy Thanksgiving, happy, um, Veterans' Day, and thank you for all that you guys do. Um, as far as the Planet Fitness and Business Hours misunderstanding is concerned, I know I had some discussion with the City Manager, um, and I just want to make sure that we're clear to our residents that it was not the city's doing, um, we don't have any provisions when it comes to that, it was Planet Fitness's, um, own accord that did that, I still get some questions and
I get them.
Comments about that, but I want to make sure that we're clear that Planet Fitness does have the option to extend their hours if they need be.
They know that.
And they're, I know, but I don't think our, our citizens and residents know that. Um, so if we could do that, uh, that'd be great, the twenty-four-hour business conception of, or, or perception of it brings more crime is actually not a true fact. I've been in law enforcement for over two decades, and I could tell you that twenty-four hour, after two decades of law enforcement experience, I will tell you, twenty-four hours, being open twenty-four hours does not attract crime. I've done the studies, I've looked at it, um, it's just a falsehood that, that exists. Um, but, um, that's one, that, my comments on that. Arts in public places, um, I had a question for the Council, maybe we can get some consensus, and maybe, um, the City Manager, I don't know if we were able to look into how much money we have in that fund. Um, but there was, um, a few incidents that occurred, I know our, our students like to take their bikes to the bus stops, they like to leave them unlocked. Some of them have gone missing, um, not saying that it was on purpose or not, uh, my son actually happened to be one of the bikes that went missing and never got returned. So I was wondering if maybe we could look at a project or a, um, kind of bringing a program together where we get the stu- the students involved, maybe in the high school junior and senior year for Westlake, they, they design a bike rack that goes along with our multimodal idea for the, for the, for the city, they design it, we partner up with either CIT or the HOA, depending on where we put it near the bus stop, we use art in public places with their board, with the board for the art in public places, and kind of pay for that, for that bike rack to be installed. I don't know if that's an option or not, but maybe something we could do.
That should be an opportunity there, so the way that the ordinance is written is that the businesses have an option of either putting money into a fund, and they don't get to choose their art, they leave it up to the committee to then present something to us, the Council, for us to ultimately approve, and/or, uh, they can take a lesser amount, I believe, and decide what they want their art to be. So you have a couple of options there, either we can, if it's a piece of art, that's also a bike rack, and it happens to be in front of a business, that can be their contribution, you know? And/or, there's going to be, if there hasn't already been, there's going to be one of these big builds that is opted just to write the check, and then it can, it's up to the committee to bring forward. I mean, that could definitely be something that we could, that I liaise on that committee, that's why I'm speaking on this.
Which bus stops are you referring to?
It's the school bus stops that are outside the community gates, right outside the community gates.
Okay.
Um, so that's where they apparently are taken from, and, 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 you know, this, this would also go along our whole concept of being, um, public safety first, and, and making sure that our crime rate stays as good as it is, because once those start getting reported, they do get reported to the FBI, and then the insurance companies do take those.
There's no bike racks at those bus stops, there?
They're far from there.
So, but would the, each community's HOA consent to a location?
They would have to.
They, yeah, I mean, they would have to in order for us to, to move forward with it, with the idea, yeah.
And, and are they locked, did your child lock it?
No, we live in Westlake, there's no crime. You don't have to.
Uh, so the real solution is having bike racks, whether they're art or not, at the bus stop.
But even, yes, but it would be, it would be a nice idea to have, like, to have the kids, like, design it, and then maybe we could even, out of our general fund or something like that, if it's a junior or senior, maybe we could supply the winner, whoever, maybe the, um, the School of Vagery Committee and the Arts in Public Places Board could get together and pick a winner, and then we could supply maybe a laptop, or something like that from our general fund to send them away to school with, um, college.
Yeah.
It's a something to get them specifically involved, and also to promote, you know, art, and promote the multimodal idea that we have here in Westlake.
We need the bike racks for one, but we.
I think, I like the concept.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea, you can get the high school to build it, you know, they have a.
We may be able to do that too, that's a possibility too, they have a shop there, yeah.
Definitely something to talk about.
Look, once you're being bad.
The boys' stuff might do it, because I know they've done this before, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, be cool.
Okay.
Buy your son a lot.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll get with the City Manager, we could work it out, talk about it.
Very good.
And that's all I ask for.
Uh, Councilman Werner.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, my, thank you, uh, happy Thanksgiving to our community, happy Veterans' Day to all our veterans, um, I have no further comments to make.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'll say, happy Thanksgiving, also thank you to all our veterans who have served this country. Um, just one item is this, uh, Thursday at six PM at the CIT offices and Westlake offices is the Education Advisory Board meeting, we'll meet at six o'clock, and I would just like to ask if we can have Nicole print a copy of the presentation from the scene name from the school district, just so that everybody has a copy of that, um, in their hands for them to review at their leisure.
Uh, excellent, I will, uh, echo previous sentiments, happy Thanksgiving. Um, I don't know if we'll have a meeting before December seventh, that is our holiday pop-up market in Westlake, um, right here on King Fisher, there's going to be vendors, and I'm told we have record, record vendors this year that have signed up for the, and there's going to be a snow globe or something to take pictures in, there's all kinds of fun stuff, um, that's December seventh.
Yeah, we meet on the second.
Okay, so we'll have one meeting, but, you know, start prepping for it now, um, let's see, November, happy birthday to me, November fifteen. It's your mayor, um, and, uh, you know, thank you to our first responders for all they do, thank you from my colleagues on the Council for their leadership, thank you to the Education Advisory Board, you guys knocked it out of the park in bringing that presentation in, I think it added a lot of clarity in terms of how things are going to move and operate here in Westlake. And, uh, on that note, I will move with staff reports, we already did fire and PSO, what do you got for us, Mr.?
City Attorney.
City Attorney?
Nothing to report.
All right, I wasn't going to write you off, I just, you know, nothing to report?
So, Mayor.
Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, so we have our first key to the city plaque for Mr. Castle, I have it here. Unfortunately, he cannot come back to attend, he's very busy. But we do have our first.
All the body.
Wow.
So we, so with the proclamation that you all passed, we'll also mail it, mail it to him.
Is this one of one, is this the only key we issued?
Is the first, very first one for Westlake.
Wow. One of one.
So with that also, I want, want to just, on behalf of the, on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, they will be having, you should have all gotten notifications, that they'll be having their first spirit night tomorrow at Jabruski's, that will support the local schools, so please come out, it's all day, have a slice of pizza, some wings, something tomorrow, and support your local schools and the efforts of the Education Advisory Board.
They have to mention West, the City of Westlake.
That's right, you have to mention the City of Westlake, Westlake Schools, I believe it is.
All right.
And to make sure they mention it, so Westlake Schools, did you have?
And then last, if I can just mention that while I'm very committed to the City of Westlake, actually during the presentation for the school board, I'd like to just have a little shout out for my daughter, who is being inducted to the National Honor Society tonight. And so she is, she is top 3% at Wellington High School, so I'm very proud of her, so I wanted to take that out, but she says I couldn't be there.
You choked up.
I'm very proud of her, so I said she's going to be in the record for Westlake, so. And that's, that's all the updates that I have, thank you.
Okay, one final public comments, section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given three minutes, and only three minutes, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, we might have some follow-up, maybe not. What do we got for public comments? Any cards?
No public comment cards, but.
Torres? Torres, whip the drum.
No, four ones, this is amazing, Alicia Torres, 5847 Whipper World Circle. Councilman Gleason, the, your idea, I love it so much, the, because I love a little utilitarian art, you know? Our city's growing as we build the infrastructure, if we can make it look pretty, I think that would, you know, statues are nice, or whatever, but so is stuff that we really use too, you know, to look pretty. So on that note, I just wondered, I keep looking for the Art in Public Places meetings, and I don't see them on the calendar.
They, they, they have, they're not meeting yet, we don't have any applications before the board, so once we have an application, then we'll, we'll call for me.
We met recently on Westlake Palms, there was their monument sign, it's also a piece of art.
Okay, but I know there's money in that, that account, so.
Yeah, there's approximately 238,000 in restricted cash in that, that, that fund.
So who would apply to use that money, like, if we're talking about?
So that's something that we would have to look at, the, how it was created.
Okay.
And determine if it's something that we could use outside of what it was designed for.
Who else up here had decided just to write the check, the Publix?
I believe it was Publix.
Publix.
I believe it was Publix, yeah.
We can.
And did they do it for their whole block, or does every little individual business?
It's a one.
One deal.
To develop one, okay, thanks, everybody, Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments before I adjourn? Sure, please, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jim August, I'm at 4654 Woodland Way.
Mr. August.
Okay, what I have, I have a concern is for young kids. I have no children, but I care about kids, especially the girls. I don't know if I, if it's something that I need to speak with the educational, education committee about how can we work with some of the vendor to see if they can put something. There's one place in the community that has, I think it's called the Academy, they don't know if I'm speaking about that. They have a program for kids out at the school, that the girls in the community, those parents have nothing to offer for the kids. Is there something that, some kind of program we can help that lady? Because I know the lady who has the facility, she's struggling, she cannot even put a sign on what she already have. I feel if girls can have some kind of program.
This is a business in Westlake?
Yeah.
Where, where are they, are they in the Grove Plaza?
It's next, it's right by Aldi.
By Aldi, okay.
I spoke with her a couple of months ago, she's struggling, she's trying to see how she can put more program and try to reach out to the community, because kids that come out of from schools, the girls have nothing to do, the boys, most of them probably play soccer or play sport, but when girls don't have anything to, or parents are not helping those girls to start participating in dance art. They tend to get lost, and that's something that's.
What you're asking for is, is what the city can do to give more awareness to one of our small businesses.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I know she's good, they're going, probably going to need some help, because they're struggling financially, they're not.
I mean, we're, we don't have dollars, but we can definitely give some awareness, and I can, you know.
Yeah, as a parent, my kid's grown up.
Yeah.
And my daughters, they're not here, they're doing pretty good with their children, but when I had kids, I had them in dance.
Yeah.
Art, and that's helped the girls to be better. Boys who play sport, weed, they excel, but if you don't do anything, you get lost.
Right. Well, I'm all for championing our small businesses, so I'll make sure to stop by and see if there's anything we can do.
Yeah, so if there's something we can do.
Thank you, sir, Mr. August, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, any other public comments before I adjourn?
Here I have one more.
Sure.
Not to undo, not to outdo you, but my birthday's on the 12th, and I bet you it's bigger than yours.
Hey, good. I'm, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
On that note, happy birthday, and I will adjourn at 7:57 PM.
Happy birthday.